Colleagues, as we have a very large number of deputations will be meeting us today, so let's start on schedule. Let's invite the deputations and also the administration team to join us. Thank you.
Because today it took two or three hours before we could start.
No, no, five minutes, five minutes, all canceled.
But they have to change the time, so...
But I can't wait to have another meeting. There's no time.
You can talk, you can talk, you can talk.
We've told them to leave. Then they'll change.
Yes, yes, that was it. That was it. They were talking about... It was like a little group.
He's talking about himself. It's not good, is it? It's not good, is it? It's not good. Is this a bad thing? It's not good, it's not good.
He didn't go today. He sent a message to us, I think he said he wouldn't give it to you.
I didn't tell him yesterday.
It's strange. He gave it to you. I said he wouldn't give it to you.
Give it to me. Okay, next time. Do you mind giving me a paper? I don't have a paper. Yes, yes, yes. Give me more paper. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm afraid I'll get cold. Yes, I'm ready for my book. Hello. Box up. The government is really big. This is the first time I've met you. It's good, I think. It's good, both happy and sad. I'm like Liu Zijiang, I'm a Chinese actor. You know, I always do this role. I've never thought, I've never thought you're a hero, brother. What? You say that, you're sick. I know. I, I, I came here, I came here for this 18 years. I know you're really heartless. How to deal with Hong Kong? Hello, how is it? It's not good. Today, 50 members in my group, I still have... It's not necessary. You, you, you... It's not good. You've put a lot of things on his body. So, all the teams are in.
All right, have all the deputations come in? All right, thank you very much. All right, the public hearing will now get started. First of all, I'd like to welcome the deputations and the administration team for taking part in the open hearing of the WSP, the Welfare Services Panel. Let me remind you of the following. That is, under Rule 83A of the Rules of Procedure, there is a requirement on declaration of interest. That is, some members are not allowed to move any motion or amendment on any matter that he or she might have a direct or indirect pecuniary interest, unless he or she has already declared a relevant interest. Therefore, I'd like to remind members that if they have any direct or indirect pecuniary interest on the subject under discussion, then before he or she speaks, he should declare the nature of such interest. I would also like to draw members' attention to the following. That is, today's meeting will be divided into two parts and will be meeting with the deputations and the individuals. And the panel will only be asking the administration to make a response after both sessions. And when there is time, then we will have further discussion. And the first part will last from 2:30 to 4:00 PM. We will have 28 deputations and two individuals attending the first session, and you may make reference to the attendance list. I'd like to remind those deputations and individuals using the microphone and earpiece. I'd like to remind you that Channel 0 is the floor. All right, you can see the device. And 0 is the floor. And Channel 1 is Cantonese. And Channel 2 is the English channel. And the chair can invite the deputations and the individuals to speak in accordance with the attendance list. And I'd like to remind the deputations and the individuals that they will not be covered by the Electrical Parts and Privileges Ordinance in making any remarks. And your submissions would also not be covered by the Electrical P&amp;P Ordinance. And also, as we have already said, that every deputation or individual will only be given three minutes. Please do cooperate with us by sticking to the three-minute rule in order to make sure that our meeting will progress smoothly. The first speaker is Ms. Lee Chui King from the Tokwa One Resident Concern Group. She hasn't arrived yet. Then, next, Mr. Lau Cheukyung, Kowloon Chi Poor Elderly Concern Group. There is another representative standing in for her. So are you representing, are you Ms. Lee Chui King? No, we are representing Mr. Lau Cheukyung. All right, three minutes, the timer will start to count. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm representing the Kowloon Chi Poor Elderly Concern Group. I'm speaking on behalf of some Kai Fongs. We are a local concern group, and we are a poor community. But then with the proposal by C Y Leng, on this, we have already conducted business and also consulted the elders in the community. And most of them are very resistant to the means test. And some elders are actually concerned that this will divide the community and that will also disharmonize the family. And given the huge reserve that the administration is sitting on, and it's also a golden opportunity to improve people's livelihood. And for those needy elders, they should be given this welfare which they deserve. And in fact, for the OALA, it's not able to alleviate people's poverty according to overseas experience. Actually, that would only lead to transfer of assets and also that would further divide the community and that would also not encourage the elders to save for rainy days. And that would also increase the administrative cost. For example, in New Zealand and Canada, they've also put in place an old age or universal retirement protection scheme in order to deal with this problem. But then in Hong Kong, we have already got some 35% of the elders living in poverty. And therefore, this proposed allowance will not be able to alleviate poverty. And in these circumstances, there is no universal retirement protection. And many elders will have to rely on their own savings. They've been living in a very frugal manner in order to save for rainy days, for their medical expenses, and also retirement years. But then, according to many elders, actually, they can only rely on the OAA, which is only about $1,000 plus a month. And that would also barely cover their daily expenses. And many of them are reluctant to apply for CSSA. And already, between 65 and 69, they are already subject to the income and asset test. During the past few years, living costs has already gone up. But then, there is a growing aging population. And therefore, I think this means test will only achieve a labeling effect. And many needy elders will simply not be applying for it. And therefore, we hope that the administration will face up to this problem. We are not just talking about respecting the elderly. We are talking about a U R P. We are talking about allowing the older to age in place and age in dignity. So without further discussion, why is it that you're bulldozing this through this community? This will only further divide the community, and this will cause confusion. And therefore, we are asking that the means test be done away with. We should have an interim proposal. And we should also have a roadmap and blueprint for the U R P. Next, Mr. Lau Hao Sing. The HK No M P F. With regard to the means test that is being proposed, that is a totally shameless act on the part of the administration. With the administration's insistence on rolling out this means test for the OALA, that will only divide the community. And there is also further discussion on universal retirement protection, which the administration has been dodging all along. The real reason for this means test is not just because it would like to introduce this as a poverty alleviation measure. The real objective is to prevent people from taking this as an interim measure for introducing a universal retirement protection scheme. Once this gap is broken through, then that might go beyond the M P F framework. Well, with regard to universal retirement protection, I think there are many in the community who have this confidence crisis on the M P F. And there are more calling for the scrapping of the M P F scheme. This is what the administration doesn't want to see. Because in fact, for the financial sector and the banking sector, they are the privileged class, and they have vested interests. And both the administration and the business sector would be trying their very best to prevent this from being scrapped. And with the introduction of the OALA, that's an empty or blank cheque issued by the Chief Executive. And it's a deformed fetus being proposed by him during his election campaign. So it's neither here nor there. But then, what we only know is he's trying to give out handouts in order to salvage his plummeting popularity since assuming office. Given the Chinese community, we attach a lot of importance to filial piety. And for those who have worked very hard for their whole life, and they have been working their whole life in order to maintain their family, I think the OALA is just a ridiculous measure to show their respect to the elders. I think we should treat everybody on the same path, and we should show our respect for them. And they deserve this token of appreciation. Therefore, we are against the means test, and we should scrap M P F right away. Thank you. Next, Tai Hong Tong and Nam Shan Estate Residence Association, Ms. Chow Kit Yin. Madam Chair, can I stand up to speak? Well, I've brought with me some gift. This is a beggar's bowl. Well, 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 for people who have this in their family, they used to put fruits there. But then, it's like a beggar's bowl here. Why is it that there are no fruits here? That's because there are no fruits. Because today's fruit money is no longer for fruits. It's for meeting the living expenses. So how would there be fruits here? Well, originally, I would have wanted to present this to the Bureau Director. But then, I decided against it. Because they said that 10 or 20 years down the road, there will be more than a million elders in the community, and we give more welfare, then the government will collapse. We will fail. I'll be one of those in the elderly population 10, 20 years down the road. All right, 20 years down the road, I'll be coming to them. And I'll be applying for OAA. Will they be giving me that? Well, when my dad was in the 70s, he did not apply for OAA. But then, there was a requirement for means test. So long as you reach a certain age, you'll be eligible for that. But then, today's government is telling us that our elders are actually cheating. But then, they're already in their 80s or 90s. All right, let's say they'll only be getting some $2,200. $2,200. And that was proposed by Mr. Ho Wing Himm. And yesterday, a reporter asked him how he did the calculation, and then he was not able to give an answer. And then subsequently, Ms. Christine Fang answered the question on his behalf, and she said that it should have been $3,100. Why is it that you have to bulldoze through this council within the next few days? This is not an imperfect system. Or for fruit money, it should have been for elders to buy fruit. But then, it's no longer used for that. But then, you're actually dividing a family. Well, both myself and my husband would have arguments. And then, when we grow older, we will argue about this. And then, he would query. Why is it that this chap is not applying for the $2,200? Definitely, she has a lot of money, that's why she is not applying. So $186,000, is that a lot? Well, actually, half of your month's pay would be more than $186,000. But then, that's the lifelong saving of an elder. All right, when you grow old, you will have to receive a lot of medical treatment. And if you go to the hospital for a minor surgery, that will cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars. Why is it that you're lowering the line? Why is it that you're suppressing them? Why is it that you're not prepared to give them all $2,200? All right, you're talking about $6,000 for everyone. And yet, for elders getting $2,200, you're requiring them to undergo the means test. All right, when you run for the election, you said that everybody would be eligible. And now, you're introducing this means test. This is really very sad. And we will no longer be able to age in dignity. Our younger generation in the future will not be supporting their elders. Next, Catholic Deotion of Hong Kong Deotion, Deo Sessin Pastoral Centre for Workers' New Territories, Mr. Augustin Yu. I'd like to comment on the administration's argument on this. Well, many years ago, we in the Catholic Church talked about the reason why there should be an administration. That's because the government should be working for the community's interests. And the administration should be working for the interests of the community. And such interests should be shared amongst everybody in a community. In other words, every member in a community should be able to share out the interest, that interest. So this is a new approach. All right. So for this particular allowance, does that mean that everybody will be able to have a share? No, that's not true. According to the Catholic Deotion, there is a lot of public interest in the community. And yet, what the administration is doing is not sharing this public interest with every member of the community. Well, the administration should have been set up for the purpose of the interests of the entire community rather than the interests of the minority. But then, unfortunately, what the administration is now doing is precisely for the minority's interest. And I think you're setting a very bad example. Because when you tell us that we will have to follow the procedures, we will have to follow the rules and regulations, we have to follow the information that has been provided. But then, President Hu also talked about scientific development theory. We have to be scientific, we have to be evidence-based. But then, today in the press, even the former campaign assistant of Mr. C Y Leng, Mr. Ho Wing Himm, has not been able to come up with justifications for the $2,200 O A L A. If you're not able to scientifically explain this to the community, then how can we be convinced? You also talk about the procedures and process or due process. All right, if there are complaints from the community, we will have to follow the established procedures. But then, today, what's been reported online is that tomorrow, you're going to have a special F C meeting in order to push this through this council. You have flouted basic logical rules and procedures. And yet, your government officials, you have totally ignored the due process of this council, and you've totally ignored the justifications and so on. And under these circumstances, if you're trying to bulldoze this through this council, yes, it's okay. But then, after this is done, then everybody does not have to take heed of the advice of the administration that they said they do not have to follow the procedures. Nobody would be willing to talk to you about due process. So you'll be setting a very bad example. And everybody will be able to stand up and attack you. Yes, we can always tie in with you if you really want that. Next, North District Employment Concern Group, Ms. Vanik Kwok, convener. Well, for the O A L A, it's just an interim measure. And it's for the short term. And in the long term, we have to have a U R P. The reason why we have to have U R P? Why do we have, why should we do away with means test? Because it's the government's duty to take care of the duties. And by introducing the means test, you're discriminating those who have worked very hard to save money. And worldwide, we have been talking about how we can work out a U R P. Is it that, well, in any case, the administration will be floundering its money?
It's to be spent on housing benefits? Why can't you help the elderly? On one hand, you say it's an allowance. On one hand, you say it's an ex gratia allowance. So it's a series of lies. All the workers find it hard to comply with your proposals. 12 years ago, the administration asked workers to contribute to the M P F, saying it was a retirement fund. It's not M P F, it's a rape. The managing fees are high. In our times, there was no... You couldn't force a person to gamble. But now, we are being forcibly raped by the fund managers, and they lose money. So they lose money even before inflation. So when will we reach our time and age with a surplus of funds? So what are you telling us? They're just saying, you retire. You haven't been raped enough. You haven't lost your monies in the gamble. If you have, if you've lost your savings in the gamble and you've only left with $186,000, that would be sufficient. So how are you going to live through your old age? Mrs. Carrie Lam yesterday said you will listen to the public opinion, and then it will be endorsed the next day. Mrs. Lam, you ignore public opinion. You are mean to the elderly. As government officials? You shouldn't be so mean to elderly. So... The savings that the elderly have accumulated, they won't take it to the grave. They will, they will pass it on to their children. So you should resolve this pension issue. Thank you. We have New Territories Evangelical Ambassador, Mr. Simon Tam. The old age allowance, the ex gratia allowance, it's for senior students aged 70. They have to make an application. There's a means test. It's not fair to the elderly, and it's not respectful. It creates a rift in society. The elderly, if they make mistakes, they make omissions, they might be criminally liable. So it is creating a hassle. It's a harassment. There are also management fees attached it. But the old age allowance, it's a token of respect for those who have contributed to society. So it's also there to help those without an income, with a disability, or who need care. It's not poverty relief. It should be part of a pension plan. And it should help resolve the elderly who are poor. We should allow everybody to enjoy these benefits. We should create harmony in society. The old age allowance, it's the same as a transport allowance. There's, Mr. Matthew Chung, you don't have any new ideas. You've run out of ideas. You require an application. The application is half an inch thick. You have to include information on the spouse and children. Only some 40,000 are eligible. And the criteria are too high. You have recruited 200 people to help the elderly fill out these forms, but nobody is there to make an application. So that's a waste of money. The elderly have to sign reams of forms. This would be another failure like the transport subsidy. The old age allowance does not resolve the poverty issues of the elderly. It should only be a transition to a pension plan. As a matter of fact, in the years, the elderly-poverty ratio has been increasing. So we can see that there is no improvement in the elderly-poor. In the past, we did not have the M P F. We only had some, the elderly only had some of their own savings and the old age allowance to rely on. We strongly request the government to implement a timetable and roadmap for a pension plan so that the elderly can have a... So that the elderly can enjoy the remaining years. Thank you very much. Next, we have North District Universal Pension Concern Group, Mr. Chan Yan Gam. The ex gratia allowance has been proposed in a rush. And they came up with a figure of 2,200. Now, the name is even changed. So even without the means test, I feel this shouldn't exist. Why? Because without a long-term pension plan or arrangement, what if we have more elderly? How would that affect the fiscal stability? So we'll have to reduce benefits? Or do we have to add more conditions to the allowance? So we should have a universal plan. We have a lot of long-term, stable proposals. I think the secretary is familiar with that. We've submitted all kinds of figures. It has to be sustainable and sufficient. Recently, the government is short of funds, and they have joint forces with the convener of Exco, Mr. Lam Mun Gong. The old age allowance. They say that we have a consensus on old age allowance. What do they mean by consensus? Do they mean that everybody agrees? No, it's impossible. So what is consensus? How do they determine that there was consensus amongst the public? There are a lot of public surveys that support a universal pension. Our figures are, those are there more in favor than those against. So if that is not consensus, then Mr. Lam Mun Gong should demonstrate what he means by consensus. We, if you really want consensus from society, then there should be a referendum. They should ask whether we agree on having a means test. And there should be some comparisons and studies on pension plans. Otherwise, they shouldn't claim there is a consensus. That is not fair to everybody. It's not fair to the survey institutes, the survey groups. We have in black and white a consensus where those are in agreement outnumber those who disagree. The senior officials claim that there is consensus and require legislators to endorse their proposals. So we have a lot of public disagreement. So legislators should not repeat your mistakes. Neighborhood and Workers' Service Centre, Mr. Wong Yun Bat. I think we are aware why there is such controversy over the old age allowance. Because Mr. C Y Leng said he would increase the old age allowance to 2,200. But all of a sudden, Mr. Matthew Chung in September changed the name. It was not an ex gratia old age allowance, it's a living allowance. So these are two different concepts. Because an allowance, it's paying respects to the elderly who have contributed so much to Hong Kong in the past. A means test, it bars those who really need this allowance. It also penalizes the elderly who have some savings. So why do elderly who have savings of more than $186,000, why are they deprived of this allowance? So this only creates a bad precedent. It encourages the elderly to spend all their money, or it encourages them to transfer their assets, and they can claim this allowance. So it encourages them to spend their money. It's a bad example. But if you talk about poverty relief, why should it be 2,200? Why is the means test at $186,000? The government cannot provide rationale. Why do you force the legislators to endorse this proposal? We see that the PolyU and the Universal Pension Concern Group, they don't want an old age living allowance. They want a pension plan. Because you are aware, the M P F is eating away into our savings. And a lot of the elderly don't have sufficient savings. The CSSA has a very severe labeling effect. So 2,200 seems like a payment to shut the elderly up. Yeah, you are urging legislators to endorse it without deliberation. But the government should come up with an employee employer, a government, a fund. The old age allowance should be a non-mains based, uh, non-mains testing, uh, allowance. And the government should also come up with a long-term pension plan to provide dignity and, uh, for our elderly. It should not be, um, a handout. Before Si Wai Lung took office, uh, he was against, uh, pension plan. And after taking office, he proposed a twenty-two hundred allowance. Uh, when I first heard it, I was very happy because it was, it doubled my, the old age allowance from one thousand ninety dollars to twenty-two hundred. But then uh, he required a means declaration. Oh, but when you made a pledge, I, I took it at face value. This twenty-two hundred, it was supposed to be an allowance. But now he's saying it's a poverty relief. Where's the poverty line? That twenty-two hundred, how is it going to relieve poverty? The twenty-two hundred, it requires a means test. You have to bear in mind, old age allowance, it was raised from six hundred to a thousand. Uh, they will require, they wanted to conduct a means test when the elderly took to the streets. And then the government backed down by saying those above seventy, uh, will not have to do a means test. Uh, that was a compromise. But now, why is, when you increase it from one thousand to two thousand, you have to conduct a means test? Is that extra one thousand going to break the bank? If not, then I think it's not necessary. Previously, there was no means test. We also require, request a non-mains test for those above seventy. Regarding the universal pension, we've been fighting for, for ten odd years. So before a universal pension is implemented, you should instead, uh, give the elderly three thousand to relieve them of poverty. What, uh, what is the government afraid of? That they can't make the payments? If you take the universal, the universal pension, we can think through it earlier and make it work. Please maintain order. Mr. Kwan Wen Keen from Labor Party. There has been a thirty percent elderly poverty ratio over the last decade or so. It is a structural problem, but Si Wai Lung has, does not make any structural change. On the other hand, in order to enhance popularity, he has doubled the old age allowance. Uh, initially, it was called an ex gratia allowance and now it's changed to old age living allowance. And it's, uh, distorted, uh, and named as a poverty relief measure. And he therefore wants to implement a means test. The Labor Party feels that the ex gratia allowance should be non-mains tested, uh, granted to those above sixty-five years old as a transition measure, transition measure to deal with elderly poverty. Why do we link old age allowance with, uh, uh, the, uh, poverty relief? A lot of developed countries, uh, they don't have such a severe poverty issue as Hong Kong. So if we're still dragging our feet and if we continue to drag our feet, it is not reasonable. We've been dealing with it for ten odd years. And the old age allowance means test, it's more ridiculous than the existing old age, uh, old age allowance. There will be a means test for those above seventy. So it is taking us further away from a universal, uh, pension. According to Oxfam twenty-ten report, some hundred and sixty-thousand, six hundred and sixty thousand are eligible for allowance. But they don't want to undergo a means test and they, therefore they forfeit the allowance. So you see there is a labeling effect. Recently, in the, uh, announcements of public ins, uh, our national public interest, the government says that it's, uh, for those in need. So some elderly might not consider themselves poor, but they have assets less than a hundred eighty-six thousand. They feel they are, uh, not, uh, they are not as needy as other people. Then they are afraid of being labeled. They are afraid of, uh, being labeled as a need of a helping hand. And they therefore reject making an application, but in fact they have a need. It's just that they are afraid of the labeling effect. Overseas studies indicate if there is a means test, it encourages moral risks where they spend their savings in order to comply with the means criteria. So the government's arrangement, does it reduce poverty? That is questionable. So therefore, a universal pension is a long-term, uh, solution to elderly poor. Okay, thank you. Fourth Right Caucus, Miss Ho Bo Ting. We feel that, uh, it's, uh, pension plan is a right of Hong Kong people. The government's spending is about fifteen billion on elderly, plus your ex gratia of six billion. Then relying on tax income to assist the poor will exceed twenty billion. If you include MPF, it amounts to more than fifty billion. But MPF is being, uh, eroded by banks and fund managers. We feel the ex gratia allowance is only a transition. The government needs to set up a universal pension plan. We have never thought that this inadequate plan would, uh, continue. It is not sustainable. So we suggest that there should be a non-mains tested, that should, we should double the old age allowance. When within five years, we should have a universal pension. So even though the government says, uh, is there to, uh, relieve the poor, there should therefore be a means test. But we have the CSSA to help the old and poor. So if the government is willing, uh, then it should review the CSSA. They should not duplicate efforts. The Oxfam had conducted a study. Some eighty, hundred eighty thousand are under CSSA, but another hundred sixty thousand are eligible, but to do not make a, uh, an application. It's because of the bad boy letter and other criteria, uh, where the elderly, uh, forfeit these, uh, applications. And we should allow the most needy elderly to receive four thousand dollars.
Now, the new scheme is only twenty-two hundred dollars. It's not enough to, uh, for, for people to live on. Uh, it's not fair for the, uh, elderly who have property. They are more, more favored. Now, some elderly people, uh, now, under the means test, the savings are not encouraged. So lower income elderly are encouraged to spend all their money. So because savings will ultimately cause them to lose the twenty-two hundred dollars. And means test is, has a labeling effect and their administrative costs. Now, last year, uh, there were, uh, four, uh, four hundred million dollars spent on OAA means test. Now, the, uh, Mr. Si Wai Lung's scheme, uh, is not the proper way to universal retirement protection. Uh, we should have a means free test, uh, interim, uh, road to, for five years to universal retirement protection, which should not be delayed. Uh, Ms. Chutein Law of Social Policy Committee of the Hong Kong Federation of Trade Unions. Now, we should look at the livelihood of the poor elderly. We should relieve them, uh, who, if, as long as they are poor and so that they can live in a dignified manner. Elderly poverty is a very urgent problem. Now, out of three elderly persons in Hong Kong, one is poor. The economy has developed, but those in the grassroots cannot benefit. The poverty gap is getting more serious. And as the economic and social structure changes, uh, the children are facing their own difficulties and so, uh, their support of the elderly has declined. The government's role is very important. Hong Kong is an affluent place. We cannot just watch as the elderly poverty issue continues to plague us. The, as the government reiterates, that this is, uh, a, a poverty alleviation measure. It is not out of respect for the elderly. It's, uh, for those over sixty-five, they are now have to pass through means test. We think this measure ignores the needs of the elderly and the actual circumstances. The administration looks at things from the economic perspective. It's not people oriented. Therefore, uh, the problem of the elderly poverty has not been resolved. Few people benefit. The OALA, uh, old age, uh, uh, CSSA, uh, is faltered because, uh, the children have to, uh, deny support for their parents to, uh, put that in writing. Now, Hong Kong people average eighty, uh, in, uh, now, uh, they live till eighty on average. And there is no universal retirement protection. How long can their pensions last? Now, these elderly people spend all their life working for Hong Kong so that Hong Kong is now successful. Can we be blind to the poor circumstances? When they get old, they have to scavenge, uh, for cardboard. Now, the government stresses self-reliance, but their working, uh, income cannot support basic livelihood. How can we ensure that people can retire with dignity? Now, the FTU, uh, asks all of you to think about this uh, from the perspective of the actual needs of the elderly. Those in government should, uh, design the most appropriate policies for the people. Next, Civic Party, Ms. Bonnie Chung, Bonnie Lung. Now, on behalf of the Civic Party, I protest against, uh, protest to Mr. Matthew Chung. Now, uh, the, uh, government is again not respecting the rules of procedure of Legco. Uh, and, uh, we demand that, uh, the government should address our concerns uh, and improve the scheme before tabling it to, uh, Legco. Instead of, uh, tabling it right away tomorrow, it's repeating the mistake, uh, when the CE tried to rush through the, uh, new administration framework. Now, the elderly poverty have increased in number. Out of three elderly persons, one lives in poverty. Uh, it's a very urgent problem. The government has proposed a twenty-two hundred dollars OAA, OALA. Uh, this is an admission that the three pillars are not sufficient to support the elderly. And it, uh, also cannot meet the challenges of, uh, population aging. Now, the means test arrangement will cause hundreds of thousands of poor elderly to be unable to benefit from the scheme because they have some meager savings. Uh, Mr. Chung has never addressed the problems, questions raised by many. Now, uh, OALA and OAA, uh, cost about eleven billion dollars in the first year, not including CSSA expenditure. Now, in less than thirty years, uh, one working person has to support almost two elderly persons. Now, we, our, uh, surplus will not be enough. That means, uh, we will spend more and more on the elderly. Uh, when will the bust occur? The government has never given us a proper reply. Does the government saying that money will fall from the sky by that time? Or have you never been concerned about the future of Hong Kong? The Civic Party thinks that a responsible government should introduce universal retirement protection as quick as possible with tripartite contributions. Now, even if we don't add taxes, we don't increase the, uh, contribution ratio and we don't increase contributions by the employees. Now, uh, for, uh, the elderly to receive three thousand dollars per month, the universal retirement protection will be able to, uh, some, be supported. Now, uh, the OALA should be only temporary. It should allow those over seventy to be free of means test. And the government should introduce early consultation on universal retirement protection. Otherwise, the Civic Party will not support the current proposal. Ms. Chair, Mr. Chair Oikin of NWSCU. We are very puzzled by the secretary. Now, uh, in ninety-six, there was already a report on the, uh, universal retirement protection. You were already a senior official. You, Ms. Carrie Lam, uh, and you were both in high office back then. She was in charge of money. You were all aware of the reports on universal retirement protection. And you now say there is no consensus. You now say you forget about it. So please step down if you do forget. Uh, it's just, uh, something twenty years ago. Now, what poverty, poverty alleviation, twenty-two hundred dollars is not enough, uh, now for poverty alleviation, you have CSSA. Now, uh, we are not talking about poverty elevation. We are now talking about respect for the elderly. You take care of your parents. How about the singleton elderly? How about, uh, now, even for, uh, two to three-person, uh, PRH units, the rental has been increased by one thousand dollars. And the children have to sign papers, uh, for their parents to apply for CSSA. Now, are you under political pressure to, uh, to, uh, so that you have to, uh, do some space saving, uh, work for the CE? Now, you want to introduce the, uh, proposal tomorrow to Legco. You have less than twenty-four hours to listen to the public. Now, only two, uh, LWB officials are here. Are all of them watching the direct broadcast? Are they listening to people's views? Uh, you have to spend hours to, uh, consider our views. And there were forty deputations last week. I'm sure you haven't digested all of them. Now, how can you get this passed tomorrow? Now, uh, Tommy Chung has not yet, uh, said, uh, as I know, he will exercise his discretion. Now, you, how can you say there is consensus? And the political groups here, especially those political parties who claim to represent the workers and grassroots, do not sell out the workers. Do not forget the workers. It's been twenty years. The government has deceived. The government has deceived the workers twenty years and there's still no universal retirement protection. And it was, it happened in ninety-seven, two thousand and two thousand and one and not now again. The workers are watching. Mr. Zhang Hui Fan of Kuicheng Elderly Concern Group. I am an elderly person who live in our estate. Now, Mr. C Y Leng, before he came into office, when he was contesting against Mr. At that time, I thought that the O A A would be increased to twenty-two-thousand dollars. Now, he said it's not O A A, it's poverty alleviation and there is means test. In my estate, there are many elderly persons who have said that this won't do. After means test, somebody will, some people will get O A L A, others won't and people will quarrel. Now, everybody contributed when they were young, but some people get O A L A, others don't. How can this be? Now, when C Y Leng was running for office, it was very clear. Everybody heard him say on T V that there will be a twenty-two-hundred-dollar O A A. But now we are very disappointed. The elderly are very disappointed. We hope the government will not go back on its word. You say poverty alleviation, but you have a means test. Now, when you were running for office, you said there would be O A A of eleven hundred dollars plus twenty-two-hundred dollars, but now I feel that he told a lie, an open lie. The government should do something concrete. Now, in trying to get approval, the government says, we have now approved it. You must endorse this policy. Otherwise, by March, you won't receive the twenty-two-hundred dollars. It's nothing to do with us. You placing the burden on somebody else. Next, Mr. Guai Chi Po of Kuicheng East. Now, we are against any form of means test and we request the universal retirement protection to be introduced as quick as possible. I share with you the experience of an elderly lady. She's over sixty in our estate. She looks seventy or eighty. She lives in Kuicheng Estate. She works there in doing cleaning work in a restaurant and she was injured in her work. Her right arm was broken and she had to get claim workers' compensation from her boss. The boss refused, so she had to go to the legal aid. Now, you know that it's very difficult process for that old person, for old people generally, but she still wanted to do it because she wanted to rely on herself rather than on the government. Now, she has assets of over a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but we all know that a hundred and ten thousand dollars is not sufficient to support livelihood for the elderly. A hundred eighty-six thousand dollars, it's only for fifty dollars per day over ten years and only if he or she doesn't spend anything on medical expenditure. Now, please consider this means test. You, if you don't want it for yourself, don't make somebody else be subject to it. Now, well, if you, now, you can show your own assets to bank book, et cetera, to the elderly. Now, one speaker mentioned the means test for those over sixty-five. Now, there is a, now, we do have a compromise. We don't want any means test. Now, you are a policymaking official. Waive the means test and introduce the universal retirement protection as quick as possible. Thank you. Next, Left Twenty-One, Mr. Now, the Legco members are not elected under equal wealth and power conditions. Now, I'd like to talk about the elderly poverty issue. Now, Hong Kong has a lot of money. We have six hundred and sixty billion dollars of fiscal reserves. Now, they earn over five hundred billion dollars per year. Now, whatever you call it, it, the O A L A doesn't cost even fifty, fifty billion dollars. Now, where does the money come from? It's not money made by the rich. It's money earned by the broad public. Now, there are over hundred, over a million poor people in Hong Kong. Now, let's talk about wealth redistribution. Sixteen point five percent income tax. U S, thirty-nine point five percent. France, thirty-four percent. Hong Kong, sixteen point five. What world, what world do we live in? Now, this is long-term exploitation. Then you offer them a little bit of alms. Now, this is the reality we are facing. Now, the O A A or O A L A, these are the bits and pieces that you offer them. Whatever you call them, you increase the amount by a little bit and yet you want means test. The elderly persons over, throughout their life, they have been exploited by the rich for decades and now they are old and they have no, nothing to rely on. You introduce means test. This is what you propose. Have you thought about the reality? Now, there are many concrete problems. Now, we have to think about it from the perspective of the wealth of society. It's talking about ten billion dollars plus. Now, they may only have five years left in their lives. They have to shoulder the responsibility or do you get the most wealthy in society and introduce, increase the income tax rate by two or three percent and that will solve the problem? How do we choose? Next, Women Workers Cooperative, Ms. Chan Suikam.
Thank you. We are the Women's Workers Cooperative. In the early nineties, when Hong Kong was experiencing this economic restructuring, we were already trying to find a way out and we were also concerned about our economic future. And what we'd like to say is the administration's proposal that we should rely on the three-pillar approach is not adequate and also the O A L A is problematic and also the current middle-age women workers will become needy elders in twenty years' time. And falsely, we should also establish a universal retirement protection scheme as soon as possible in order to resolve the needs of needy elders of different ages. And as grassroots women workers, we would like to retire in dignity and for us, we have worked for our whole life and now we are in our middle age and yet what we have heard from the administration is that it will resort to the three-pillar approach in dealing with Hong Kong people's retirement protection and the so-called individual saving, print money and also C S S A and also M P F. All these are not able to provide adequate retirement protection for the grassroots, in particular, the M P F. Indeed, it has been in place for twelve years and yet it has not been able to help workers and it's like a money-eating monster and it's been taking away the contribution from workers and there are a lot of shortcomings. For example, the contribution is very low and at a time when workers retire, they will not be able to get much and also there would be hefty administrative fee being imposed by the banks and, and workers' contribution will have to be invested in the financial market and that would only, they would only, they would have to sustain the volatility in the market and all the risks will have to be shoulder by the workers and also as employers will have the choice of offsetting their contribution against severance payment and that's grossly unfair to the workers and by the time when we retire, we will not be able to get much. And the administration now introduces this O A L A and yet our asset cannot exceed a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars and it's neither here nor there option by the, well, given the fact that our contribution under the M P F system is not that much and after contributing for more than ten years, by the time when we reach age sixty-five, we might be able to get about a hundred thousand or something and then the administration will then tell us that we will not be eligible for the O A L A because we have already got a saving of over a hundred eighty-six thousand. How can this be fair to the workers? Now, we know that the M P F scheme has been one of the justifications for the administration to deny ourselves from the O A L A. But then, over the years, the administration has refused to introduce the U R P and as a result, both our, well, our parents have become the needy elders this, now, and the administration must resolve this problem of elder, elderly poverty and we must introduce a better system and the administration must promise some, a timetable and a roadmap for that. Thank you. Mr. Lee Chapman from Left Twenty-One Production Group. Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, I see the bureau director, he's like tuning to the radio, tuning into the radio program when we speak. So, why don't we shout to him? We want to have a U R P. Let's chant slogans. We don't want any means test. We want U R P, universal retirement protection. I hope that our meeting can progress smoothly because there are thirteen more groups who would like to meet with us. Thank you. All right, for the, your name is Chong, but then, the Neighborhood and Worker Service Centre also has a representative whose name also is Ah Chong. But then, you two apparently are playing different roles. Well, even if you were to give out six thousand dollar cash handouts, you've been criticized squarely by all quarters of the community. Have you ever thought about it? Why is it that everybody is calling for review of the C S S A system? Well, if you think that grassroots are so greedy, actually it's also a cash handout. But then, how come many people are criticizing it? And also for the W I T S, well, everybody has been asking for a dual-track system and so why is it that everybody is criticizing you even though you've been giving them, you've been giving out cash handouts? That's because, well, even if you were to offer cash handouts, people are not that greedy. The problem is that, well, within the welfare bureau of the administration, there are problems. We are not just asking for patsy favors from the administration. We are just asking for decent living. That's the responsibility of the government. And if you do not want to work in that vicious cycle so that every time when you try to give people handouts, people still criticize you, then why don't you just act on your conscience? Well, how can two thousand two hundred dollars be enough to lift people out of poverty? Well, in winter, there are elders who have to be street dwellers and they might die as a result of the cold weather and so on. All right, do you know what it means? Well, I don't know what or not you're sure that you'll be able to have your vote carried in this council or else you're actually forcing us to take to the streets. So, why have you not attempted to collect the views that have been given on this occasion so that you can have a bottom-up approach on this occasion so that policies can be changed instead of just giving us handouts in order to stop us from criticizing you? I'd like to give you this news article. I hope that you spend some time to read it. Well, all you need to do is to give it to our colleagues. Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Alok Hin, member of the Southern District Council. Yes, I'm representing the D P in speaking today. Well, I've read the so-called O A L A document and there are two problems and I'd like to put them to Mr. Chung. All right, for the means test, I think as many have said, is fraught with problems. So, how are you going to deal with the elders themselves and also the relationship with their children? So, how are they going to deal with their assets? Well, if they were to transfer the money to or assets to the children, this is most ridiculous. But then, if you tell them that, all right, there are better approaches, there are better means test, then what kind of system is that? So, is it, is that going to be the bedside statement like what we have now? Well, that would create another problem. Just now, as many grassroots groups have told you, all right, for those needy elders, actually, in the end, they might not come forward to apply for it because they think that they are, they are actually blaming the children for being non-filiopious. And for those who would like to get it, all right, their children will have to sign the bedside statement that would also create a lot of family problems. That's why whatever you are going to do under the means testing system, you're not able to resolve this problem or the questions that have been raised by members and also from the civic society. And the next problem is, well, for the O A L A, the old age living allowance, what we are most concerned about is, all right, given the proposal that will be approved, that will be replacing the future possibility of introducing a universal retirement protection. And there are justifications for our concerns because in Ming Paul Daily, you published an article, you said that, all right, with the O A L A. Then, for any new policy or new plan, you will have to take care of the policy and also the long-term impact and also the sustainability and then you moved on to say that in the coming few decades, there'll be a change in the population profile and the O A L A will be able to better suit the needs of the community. All right, if you really intend to introduce a U R P system, then you would not have done those calculations. The fact that you have done those calculations, you're telling people that you do not intend to introduce a U R P. So, have you got a timetable for the U R P? Another point is, if you really intend to introduce a U R P, you will not be coming up with short-sighted policies. For example, first of all, the O A L A is also short-sighted and also you talk about the E C A under the M P F scheme, the employee's choice arrangement. So, how can you ask the grassroots workers to learn how to make their investments? They are not like Professor Zhang and even for Professor Lu Ting-Ming, he's also losing money in his investments. So, you will have to give an account as to the timetable on U R P. When will you be discussing it? When you, will you be introducing that or else both members and the grassroots groups will not find it acceptable? Thank you. Next, Industrial Relations Institute, Ms. Lai Yun May. Thank you. Well, yes, this is a very important issue because we should start from a U R P because, well, actually, for the current needy elders, they are the former generation or previous generation of workers. In fact, from the colonial days back until now is fifteen years and still we have not got this U R P in place. And for the middle-age workers, well, twenty years ago, when they are faced with economic restructuring, they have been marginalized and the situation is getting worse and they're actually shouldering the situation whereby we no longer have any industries and we are actually very much a financial services-oriented community and economy and many of them are faced with this problem of working poverty and how are they going to support? and how are they going to support their parents who are already elderly? And uh, all these should not have been shouldered up by the families on their own. And the entire community should have helped them out. And yet, regrettably, from the colonial days, the Hong Kong administration, with regard to the protection for its workers, they have adopted a very uh, haphazard approach. And um, and uh, what's more important is that uh, you're telling us that uh, for the welfare system is there to help the uh, the needy uh, elders only. And therefore, you have not been focusing on the issue of um, the injustice uh, in the distribution of wealth. And there are many elders who are reluctant to come forward to apply for CSA when it comes to poverty alleviation. Why aren't you not improving the CSA? Why are you coming up with this uh, uh, OALA which is neither here nor there? And for those who have worked hard throughout their life, and even if they have managed to save a hundred eighty-six thousand dollars as their lifelong saving, why is it that they are going to be defined as uh, those who do not have any need and therefore they should not be eligible for the OALA? And uh, you're coming up with this uh, asset and income test under the OALA. It's an insult to these elders. It's actually uh, going to have a labeling effect on them. And uh, what we are asking for is um, uh, aging in place and aging in dignity. We are not asking for welfare, and therefore, URP is very important. And for those members who are here, both uh, from the uh, business sector and also the New People's Party, they said that they had no idea as to what's meant by universal retirement protection. One of the most important principles under a URP is that uh, we want the capitalists and also those with means. They should contribute to the system so that for the low-income uh, workers and also homemakers and housewives, uh, they should be able to benefit. And the administration should not pass on the buck to the next generation and the younger generation because in our society, if we do not save money, then uh, the future commitment will be even more heavy. And what's more important is, what we are asking for is um, with the introduction of the OALA, it should have been an interim measure, and we should do away with the means test. And a dedicated committee should be set up to look into the timetable and roadmap for the uh, URP. And in the end, uh, we have a coalition. And we'd like to present a gift to Mr. Matthew Cheung. I hope that you remember us. Security guard, please help us. We want roadmap. We want timetable. All right, your voice has been heard. It's okay. Next, um, Mr. Frankie Peng, Hong Kong Federation, Hong Kong Christian Industrial Committee. Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of workers. We'd like to express our strong uh, regret for this. Last week, when we received the notification of the Southern Secretariat about uh, today's public hearing, we had a lot of question marks as to whether or not the administration really intends to listen to the views of the community. I think they are just doing is uh, doing it uh, as a lip service. They are just going through the motion. In Bible, they said that, well, Jesus said that uh, if they want anything, then uh, we will give them. And if they want to knock on our door, we will have to open the door for them. Because whoever asks for it, uh, they'll be able to get it. And for those uh, who are seeking for it, they'll get it. And uh, for those knocking on the door, the doors will be open, open for them. And Jesus said that amongst you, if there is anybody who would like to um, get a piece of bread or, or a loaf of bread, uh, how would we be giving you, why would we be giving you stones? So whoever, well, even for parents, uh, they know that they will have to get the best for their children. And therefore, if you want people to treat you in a certain manner, you should also treat others in that particular manner. So that's what uh, uh, the Bible teaches us. So as honorable members of this council, have you ever thought about the needs of the citizens? In particular, for the uh, employees, uh, well, in the past, uh, they've been subject to a lot of uh, suppression. And we've been fighting for them for many years. And uh, we can see that uh, they have a lot of needs that have yet to be met. And you should have heard the voices from the community, in particular. C Y has to honor his uh, election pledges. And now, he's uh, pushing this through this council. And he's turning the special OAA into this OALA. I wonder if you've ever thought about this? That is, if your children ask you for a loaf of bread, what kind, what will you be giving him? And now, these needy elders are asking the incumbent government to help them uh, in meeting their daily needs. But then you're just giving them a piece of stone. So when they, well, the OALA will not be able to solve them, will not be able to help them solve their uh, difficulties. It's like what Jesus said. All right, they're asking for a fish, but then you're actually giving them a stone in return. So as the Hong Kong Christian Industrial Committee, whatever the outcome may be on the OALA, I strongly urge the incumbent government to give a second thought to the welfare policy and also our universal retirement protection. We have to review it as soon as possible so that uh, in the future, more elders can benefit from this. Thank you. Thank you. Next, um, um, Joint District Haukers Development Platform, Ms. The, Ms. Feng.
Well, I'd like to tell you a story. I've been going to the old districts to help the Haukers. But then there are these, uh, there are many problems experienced by the elders. In Kun Tong, there's an elderly lady who is uh, sc- picking up carton boxes. She's very famous, and uh, she's called Chit Ma. And she no lon- she no longer comes to the district because of the um, urban renewal in Kun Tong. And the URA has been kicking everybody out. And as a result, uh, there are no longer Kaifongs and residents. And uh, there will be, there's no community network whatsoever. In the past, uh, they used to save up the carton boxes uh, for this elderly lady. Well, she's in her nineties, and uh, these days, uh, she no longer goes there. And she's living on her own. And every time, uh, when the carton boxes are saved up for her, so that she'll be able to go there to pick up the carton boxes, so that she'll be able to make some uh, uh, meager sums. And even for uh, minibuses, uh, they'll be taking her for free. And now, she's not able to make a living, and now she has passed away. This is really regrettable, and it's very sad. I live in a, I live in another estate, and it's called Choi Ping Estate. And there's an elderly lady whose surname is Lau. And in the past, uh, she used to be a factory worker. The reason why I got to know her, that's because on one occasion, I took a bus uh, to uh, Jordan. And uh, I saw her, and she wasn't able to get on board of a bus. And uh, she had this retina problem. And I took her to Ga- uh, to um, to Jordan to see the doctor. And she didn't have enough money. And every time, the doctor would um, examine her the um, consultation fee. And then I asked uh, elderly uh, Lau, why did you not apply for CSA? And she said that I, I, I didn't know how to do it because nobody was, uh, nobody in my, in my family is able to help me. So I think you're abusing the elders. All right, you're telling us that uh, whether you call it a special OAA or OALA. Please don't play tricks, C Y Long. You have to be serious about what you're going to do. All we are asking for is and you, uh, is a URP. And for, for the MPF system, uh, it's garbage. And now, you're talking about a EC, an ECA in Singapore, in overseas countries. Actually, they're introducing universal pension sk- system. And the administration will be topping up everything. And uh, they are actually helping you uh, in paying uh, mortgage payments and also uh, having babies and so on. And still, um, there are complaints from the community. And yet, you're still doing something that is uh, totally uh, meaningless. And um, so Chen Yun Han, um, when Matthew Cheung, well, um, well, you allow Matthew Cheung to reintroduce um, his package. You said that he's willing to talk to you. I do not see how you're working hard for us. And then Mrs. Carrie, Carrie Lam, she's completely uh, powerless. Well, a number of years ago, when was, when she was in charge of our welfare, she, she done, uh, she did so many bad things that uh, it's difficult to come up. There, there's a catalog of bad things that she did. And therefore, we ask that C Y Long should step down. We want a universal retirement protection.
We ask for roadmap. Thank you. Wan Zai, Concerned Group Chairman. The means test consequences are well described, and there is a lot of displeasure regarding universal plunge, universal pension. There are a lot of suggestions. Some people also created their own roadmap. But the government ignores these calls and wants to ride roughshod and wants to endorse this Old Age Living Allowance. This is policy brutality. Legislators being uh, elected by the public uh, should heed our opinion. They should stand up to government brutality. Otherwise, you are a pawn to the government's uh, brutal policy. Well, thank you for attending the Legislative Council Hearing. We have two groups. Uh, there is a public gallery upstairs. Uh, we need to welcome the second group. Could you maintain your composure? We heard you. I'd like you to calm down and allow the second group. If you wish to continue, there is a public gallery upstairs. Uh, we'll allow the second group five minutes to enter their premises. Please respect our legislative procedures. Uh, maintain your composure. There is ample opportunity for you to express your view. Please maintain order. Thank you.